Iminetren Teisaisnelehes Latun Guam is called to order. Buenas and good morning colleagues. I will now call upon our legislative chaplain, Father Paul Goffigan, for the prayer. Please stand.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, we offer our prayers this morning for Honorable Vice Speaker Tina Munier Barnes. We ask the Lord to continue to heal her and give her strength. We also pray for her caregivers to the Lord who grant them patience and perseverance. O God of all kindness and hopefulness, as we enter another legislative session, open the hearts and minds of our honorable legislators, and through your wondrous spirit, transform them in your love, and in doing so, may they be enlightened with your wisdom, softened with your mercy, and directed by your will and purpose. And in the spirit of Saint Michael the Archangel, may the laws they create defend what is good and righteous; may they have the courage to defend life at all costs; and may they always put on the armor of love to put away all selfish desires and will nothing but the good of all. And through the intercession Saint Michael the Archangel, we ask you to grant our petitions in the name of your Son Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of Imelazan Mastakiluna sacrificio on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of Imelazan Mastakiluna sacrificio, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, you are recognized.
On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Cook 3rd Class Wakin Jesus Tamanglo and the family of Cook 3rd Class Wakin Jesus Tamanglo for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
For the recitation of Inifresi, our legislative secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton kindly lead us.
Inifresi, ginini mastakilu gihinasoku, imastakulum gi korasonhu, zani masfigu naninasinyahu, hu afresen maisetu para bai protehi zanhi defendi, ihanangi, i katura, ilanguahi, i ari, i hanam zanitana timoru. Nirenshaku deretsugininazuas tata, eshi hu afitma gihilui biblia, zani bandarahu ibandaren Guam.
For the singing of the Guam hymn in Chimoru and the singing of the national anthem, with Senator Joe S. Augustine kindly lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn and Senator Telotay Tukwi kindly lead us in the singing of the national anthem.
Fanogi timoru huri tanota, kantana tu nanagi todui luga. Para i onra, para i gloria, abiba isla sen para. Para i onra, para i gloria, abiba isla sen para. Todui tempui pas para hita, zan ginini langit na bendishon. Contra peligru na fan safuham, duz protegi lan Guam. Contra peligru na fan safuham, duz protegi lan Guam.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Kindly be seated. Sisus Massey, Palih. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duennius. Senator Moylan. Vice Speaker Munier Barnes. Senator Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rigel. Senator Sengasteen. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegui. Senator Terahy. Speaker Terahy. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Assistant Majority Leader, Acting Vice Speaker, Legislative Secretary, Senator Shelton. You are recognized.
Buenas, Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated August 2, 2021, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the Legislative Journal, subject to correction, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are messages from Imaga Hagen Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion that messages from Imaga Hagen Guam be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. There are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's Session Journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced, Bill Numbers 165-36COR and 166-36COR, through 183-36LS and 184-36COR through 200-36COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolution Numbers 132-36COR through 137-36COR, through 156-36LS and 157-36COR through 169-36COR, be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On the motion on the introduction and first reading of the bills and resolutions, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Shelton, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse senators not present for today's legislative session.
On the motion to excuse those not present, any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are still under motions. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still under motions? Are there any other motions? Senator Sengasteen, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On this Gold Star Family Day, I move to place Bill Number 184-36COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council on Public Transit, and is an act to authorize the military order of the Purple Heart Guam Chapter 1315 to use a portion of the Skinner Plaza to establish the Guam Pacific Island Gold Star Families Monument honoring Guam's Gold Star service families whose son or daughter made the ultimate sacrifice in service of our island and country. This was introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Thalina Cruz Nelson, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier Barnes, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Jose Pito Terlay, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Jim Moylan, Senator Chris Duennius, and also during the public hearing, it was also recognized that yourself, Madam Speaker, Senator Joanne Brown and Senator Tello would like to be cosponsored, and that will be addressed if added on the agenda. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator Sengasteen. On the motion to place Bill 184-36, Senator, if I can clarify, that's a notwithstanding motion.
That's correct.
Thank you. So, on the motion to place Bill 184-36, notwithstanding the rules onto the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions, are there any other motions? Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding House rules, I move to place Bill Number 106-36COR as amended by Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council on Public Transit, as introduced by myself, Senator Joe Sengasteen, Senator Peter Terahy, and Senator Frank Epplos Jr. It's an act to add subsection 601-091I111 to Chapter 60, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, its relative to including police precincts to the list of exceptions wherein authorized individuals shall not openly carry a firearm or carry concealed firearms. I understand that the committee report is already online. Madam Speaker, wish to place this on session agenda. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion to place Bill 106-34, is that as amended by the committee? As amended by the committee, notwithstanding the rules on the session agenda. Senator Brown, did you have a point of inquiry?
Madam Speaker, I don't have a... I just want to note, in the spirit of public notice requirements to the public, even though the legislature does have the authority to do exactly what the members are voting to do with regards to additional bills being added to the agenda, and I certainly don't object to the content of the bills. But I think in the spirit of the law, especially now because we are requiring the rest of the government of Guam to comply with public notice requirements so that the people of Guam will know when bills are being heard on the floor of the legislature that we provide them due notice. I am aware that you have, or you are now also publishing in the paper to notify the people of Guam when we do have session. We are now watching and slowly seeing, hopefully, the rest of the government agencies, if not sooner, better, to start ensuring that they put public notices out that include the agenda of issues that are going to be discussed during public meetings, as well as other things that were not part of my law but were passed by this legislature with regards to public notice to also include and identify the funding sources for that, to indicate that it's being paid for with government funds or respective autonomous agencies.
Senator, are you making a point of order? If you could state your point of order?
Well, I am stating that as a point of order because I just want our colleagues, I mean, to be more conscientious. Just because we have the power to do things doesn't mean we should have the power to abuse the power that we have. And by not giving adequate notice to the public of what additional bills are being added to the agenda, I think we're not being fair to the rest of the public, as well as the government of Guam, that we're mandating by law to meet these public notice requirements. So I'm just relaying that to our colleagues to be mindful of that. Because I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation, unless it's a major emergency that we have before us. We should give the public due notice on what bills we are putting on the session agenda and stick to that, short of a major issue of emergency that's being brought before our public. So I do want to relay that to our body and hopefully that the next session that we have, we're not adding on additional bills that have not been duly noted to the public. With that, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Your point of order is duly noted. I would like to also point out, so for Bill 184-36 that was just moved onto the session agenda regarding the Gold Star, we did give notice that that was one of the potential items to be placed on the agenda. I have always published a call to session in the newspaper, and we continue to do that, and we give notice of the bills as put on the agenda by the Committee on Rules, and also we are now including potential items discussed at the Committee on Rules that, and Bill 184-36 was one of them. Okay, so we are now on the motion to place Bill 106-34 onto the session agenda. On that motion, Senator Titegui. Do you have a point of order?
Well, actually, Madam Speaker, just, yeah. I believe Bill 106 was not placed on the session agenda or notified. You mentioned...
That's correct.
Right. You mentioned earlier about the potential items to be placed on session floor agenda, and Bill 106 was not included into that notification. So I, considering what the last, you know, speaker was mentioning, and in good faith, especially from this legislature where the people of Guam entrust in us to be transparent and accountable, I have to object to this.
On the motion, Senator Shelton.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. From the Committee on Rules, I'd like to make mention that Bill Number 106-36, the committee report, was cleared by the committee over a month ago, placed online. It has been online. And by placing it on the agenda today, it will go to the bottom of the file, and so we probably will not get to this bill for several days, giving the public a few days to review the committee report if they so wish, online. So I stand in support of this motion.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Sengasteen, do you have a point of order?
Madam Speaker, just for the purpose of the public that's listening, the number one, I understand the advance notice of five days. Today's our first day. If you count the number of days and the number of bills we have, Madam Speaker, it would meet the five days. To hear any bill that's added on, because it'll be at the bottom of the agenda. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Just, Senator Titegui, point of order?
Madam Speaker, can we take a short recess just to clarify something with legal?
I know, all right, we'll take a one-minute recess. We are back in session. We are going to vote on the motion. Senator Titegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the short recess there. Knowing what the process is today and knowing that we all agree that these bills won't be heard until next week, Friday, giving the five-day notice, then I'm going to withdraw my objection and ensure that, you know, this bill doesn't come on until that five-day notice. Thank you.
All right, we're going to vote on the motion. Do you have a point of order?
I'm withdrawing, Madam Speaker.
I understand, but I do want to add for the record...
No, Senator Titegui has withdrawn her objection.
I understand, but I do want to put...
Asking Senator Brown if she has a point of order. Do you have a point of order, Senator?
For the record here, we are not going through the proper process of notifying the public with regards to our schedule. We're simply saying we're adding it to the agenda. We're not publishing it to notify the public in advance. I just want to, I just want to make that point for the record.
Noted.
Because we are really trying to go around the process.
Noted, thank you. Senator Shelton.
Point of information, Madam Speaker. The Committee on Rules every day sends out updates to the media of what is placed on our session agenda, what moves, and so we will send this out to the media as soon as session completes, recesses for the day. So this will be noticed to the media.
Madam Speaker.
Do you have a point of order or a point of information?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker, because this, this...
Please state your point of order.
I'm going to state my point of order because the legislature does not and has not in the time I have been here properly notify the people of Guam. There's only two members that have committees here that properly duly notify the people of Guam in advance with regards to hearings.
Senator Brown.
This does not meet that requirement. I just want to note that. Simply sending the media does not provide public notice to our people.
Order, please. Your point of notice is duly noted. We are on notice. If there is anyone else who needs to consult with legal, please do so. Otherwise, we're going to vote on the motion to place Bill Number 106-34 on the session, on the second reading, on the session agenda. All right. The objection was withdrawn. Is there any other objection to that motion? There is an objection. So all in favor of placing Bill 106-34 on the session agenda, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We're on motions. Are there any other motions? All right. If there are no other motions, then we are going to proceed to legislative concurrences. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, the nomination of Clara R. Dogato to serve as a member, real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture the nomination of John Q. Lozama to serve as a member, public-at-large representative of the Guam Parole Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts the nomination of Cisco S. Hotapia to serve as a member, public-at-large representative of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. There are no items under consent calendar, so we shall proceed to the second reading file. The first bill under our second reading folder is Bill Number 70-36COR. Senator Frank Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, consulting with our legal counsel, and she would like a little bit more time to be able to review the bill and everything, I'd like to be able to move Bill 70 to the bottom of the second reading to give our legal counsel time to be able to provide the work that she needs to do.
Thank you. On the motion to move Bill Number 70-36COR to the bottom of the second reading folder, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, Senator Sengasteen.
Madam Speaker, just one point of concern. At the bottom of the file is the bills that will be heard on the Committee of the Whole. If it can be put before the Committee of the Whole goes into motion, I would actually recommend that. Thank you. So moved.
All right. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill 111-36COR. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I ask to also pass on file to place on the agenda before the Committee of the Whole.
You would like Bill 111 to be heard in the Committee of the Whole?
No, I'm, to pass, to place it on before the Committee of the Whole.
All right. On that motion to place this bill at the bottom of the second agenda prior to the Committee of the Whole bills, are there any objection to that motion on Bill 111? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill 116-36. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Good morning, Senator Hafaday. Bill 116-36 sponsored by myself, co-sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terahy, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier Barnes, Senators Joanne Brown, Jose Pito Terahy, James C. Moylan, Teloty Titegui. V. Anthony Ada seeks to increase the enforcement capability of Guam EPA to address illegal dumping through the following means: expanding the scope of apprehending officers and including the purchase of supplies and equipments for the enforcement of better laws.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker?
Please state your point of order, Senator Blas.
It still hasn't been accepted on the floor.
Thank you.
Which version are you moving, Senator?
This is the amended version.
It's amended by committee. It's accepted. It was...
She didn't move that.
Yes. She is making a motion now to...
She was going into her...
The bill as amended by the committee has been placed on the agenda by the Committee on Rules.
I understand that, Madam Speaker, but...
So she's...
I will permit her to go ahead and restart her.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, thank you, Senator. I do make the motion to place Bill 116-36 as amended by my committee on the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
So as I said, this bill seeks to increase enforcement capability of Guam EPA to address illegal dumping through the following means: expanding the scope of apprehending officers and including the purchase of supplies, equipments for enforcement of litter laws. Bill 116-36 seeks to make a number of amendments which would officially and effectively direct these funds towards the end goal of ending illegal dumping. Specifically, so some of the changes that were made since the time of the public hearing, but first I would like to talk about the initial bill itself. So it would appropriate 25% of funds collected from all assessments, fines, bail, forfeitures and other funds collected from or received pursuant to the Litter Control Act to the judiciary of Guam. It would allow Guam EPA to transfer up to 45% of funds collected from an issued citation to the agency of an apprehending officer, and it appropriates 25% of the funds, the Guam Beautification Fund. So since the public hearing, we received significant comments about the bill itself. So the bill is a pretty old bill, and since the time it was created, illegal dumping has been... become such a big issue, and it was important to identify this in language and definition as part of the Litter Control Act. And as such, it would require additional penalties over, let's say, a simple littering event. And so what... the changes that were made as far as the penalties took into that account. So littering versus illegal dumping, the fines and penalties would be much greater for illegal dumping versus littering. The second thing was that some of the changes that were made included that, you know, previously in current law, upon the first offense, the offender would have the option to do service or pay the fine. And what we're finding is that many of them rather pay the fine than do the service. And so what this bill does, it actually also provides an opportunity to... for the offender to learn the proper behavior. What is the good behavior? So in a way, we're trying to curb the repeat offense of illegal dumping, and in a way, it's restorative justice. And so how is that going to work? So the idea is that upon the first offense, they would have to pay the fine and service. And what the service entails is cleanup, so that part of that's restitution. The other part is engaging in outreach to the community about what are the proper ways to handle litter. So it can include litter outreach, education outreach. It could also include recycling efforts. So as you know, recycling could potentially lead to a monetary benefit. It could lead to possibly cottage industries. So the hope is that with this... the changes in this bill is that it would not expand enforcement capability to all law enforcement agencies, but it would also provide an opportunity for the offender to develop the proper behaviors to address... prevent illegal dumping from recurring. And that's what I'm really proud about this, is that it provides many different angles if we want to solve illegal dumping. Of course, enforcement is one thing, but I think really it's about changing the culture, changing the mindset. And I think that's what this bill does. In addition, it's a fair bill because it... the fines are commensurate with the offense and the number of times the offense occurs. So there were additional testimonies. So I did reach out to the stakeholders, and I would like to also, you know, have some time to append this to the record. I can either do this during recess, or I can come in at the closing remarks to do this, but there were... overall, it was support, but there was an amendment, too, that was requested.
We will accept a motion to append that to the journal?
Yes, so we received testimony from the Lieutenant Governor in support, the Mayor's Council. They support the efforts of addressing illegal dumping, but they did request some amendments to be made, which I would need time to do that. So we can either continue the discussion or recess.
Recess for...
To prepare the amendment.
A floor amendment?
Yes, yeah.
All right. So we're going to take a one-minute recess. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to recess. My staff is undergoing some spotty power issues, and I need to...
To recess or pass on file?
Oh, sorry, to pass on file, yes.
To pass this bill on file while you prepare a floor amendment?
Yes.
Shall we pass it? Can you clarify your motion?
Yes, I move to pass Bill 116-36 as amended by the committee on file.
Pass it on file until the bottom of the agenda or just behind the next bill?
I think, yeah, behind the next bill should be fine.
All right. On that motion, is there any objection? On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill 116 is passed on file. We are now on Bill 130-36LS. This bill is sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier-Barnes. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also move to pass Bill 130-36 on file at this time.
On that motion, is there any objection? What... can you specify where on the agenda it will be passed to?
To place it before the Committee of the Whole.
All right. On that motion, is there any objection? As the first bill during Committee of the Whole, is that correct?
Yes.
Is... On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill 158-36LS. This bill is also sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier-Barnes. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to set aside Bill Number 158-36LS.
Can you please specify the set aside?
Oh, Madam Speaker, we'd like to set it aside to be entertained at a later session.
All right. On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now... pardon me. We're now on Bill 162-36COR. Senator Sabina Flores Perez, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
I move that we break for lunch now and come back at 2:00.
On the motion to recess until 2:00 p.m., is there any objection? On the motion, hearing no objection, motion carries.